Hello, I'm Kurt Weitzel and I want to welcome you to the coolest and most informative podcast in the Westfield, Indiana area. What's up, Westfield? What's up, Westfield is a local chat fest to dig deep into politics development, who's doing what and anything else we can fit into forty-five minutes of fun behind a microphone. If you have topics or an interest in being an amazing guest, please reach out to us and we'd love to hear your ideas. Today, we are online for our November edition, late November edition. And my awesome guest today is one of Westfield's standout counselors charging his way into one of the top leadership roles in our community. After winning the council election and quickly obtaining the city council president badge, my guest got to work doing his part to make Westfield the place he and his constituents love it to be. So please welcomes Mr. Mike Johns to the podcast.
Hello, Kurt. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for doing this today.
Hey, you're welcome.
As many people don't know, and you saw this, it's kind of chaotic getting it going and getting our schedule together, so I appreciate it.
It's about that time of year, holidays are coming.
Right? Yeah. Well, we are here today in the Westfield High School's podcast room, which doesn't look like a podcast room, does it?
This, this is amazing. It really is. Wow.
What would you describe this room? It's almost like a music room, isn't it?
Uh, yes, a little combination between a music room and my garage, actually. There's more wires hanging on the wall here.
Thank you for not parking in here. So, Mr. Brunz is kind enough to host us today. It's just kind of fun to try this out. It's such a nice space that I thought it would be cool to try it or use it and why not, right?
This is a great space. Yeah, this is pretty neat.
And our high school is awesome. They just rebuilt it last year, as you know, and it's pretty swanky. So, our first thing, you know, I've kind of gave you some questions ahead of time. You're kind of the point man on the council at this, at this time, and I know you don't, didn't ask for that title, but you're getting a lot done and it's been fun to watch, especially as someone that's, you know, paid attention for quite a while. And I just thought you'd be an interesting guest. I know you're an interesting guest and you've got a lot going on and things to share, so.
Great.
I thought it'd be fun to talk to you about that, so. First, if, if you just introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, who you are, what you do, and give us that, kind of your professional personal.
Sure, sure. Okay, so my, my name is obviously Mike Johns. I have been a Westfield resident now since twenty twenty, or tw- I'm sorry, two thousand, two thousand, twenty years now. Grew up in the Chicago area, suburb, went to University of Illinois, ran track there, not on a scholarship, I was just one of the guys on the team, okay, but it was, it was, it was, it was an interesting, interesting time back in the late sixties. And so there was a lot of things going on in the country at that time. Graduated from school and during the middle of a recession, and so there were no jobs around. So I wound up becoming a household goods mover. So I actually was a union employee working on the trucks for six years. And it was, it was, it was a fun time, interesting time, a lot of camaraderie out there.
When was this? What year was that?
That was, that was the seventy-one through seventy-six, seventy-seven timeframe. Left that, went back to work for my dad's company. He had a printing company and he had problems, union problems. They had become unionized. He needed somebody who understood the union and could work, work around it. So from a management standpoint, he put me in there to take care of that and I was there for five years. At the same time, I was fortunate enough, I went back to school and to Northwestern and picked up an MBA at Northwestern. And then following that with my background in moving and an MBA, I wound up hooking up with Allied Van Lines.
All right.
And wound up as one, as an executive at Allied Van Lines and I was in charge of agency development, which meant that I basically had nine hundred and fifty agencies all across the country. And I was responsible for helping develop their business plans, helping them through sales, marketing, operations, recruiting new agents, lending money to agents to grow.
To me, that sounds like a big company. Was that a big company?
That was, that was a big company, yeah. It was one of the top three van lines in the, in the country, Allied, Mayflower, North American at that point in time. After, after quite a number of years there, about five or six years there doing that job, Allied Van Lines got sold to a British firm, retained the name. And I just, I got, I was not, I was a little uncomfortable working for the Brits, moved on, went to work for Beacons for a while, came to Indianapolis with Wheaton Van Lines as Vice President Sales and Marketing for Wheaton, stayed with Wheaton for five or six years and then went back to Allied's second largest agent, which was the fifth largest actual individual agency within the country. And we had eight locations. I was VPS Sales and Marketing, traveled around quite a bit. I had a hundred and twenty-five salespeople in those eight locations. And we had a great five-year run. We doubled the size of the business in five years. And at the end, we, the owner sold the company to the largest mover in the nation, which was great.
That's a good buyer.
And, and I decided that I was kind of, at that point, I was, I was hoping to, to buy and purchase a van line. And once, so I was negotiating, came back to Indianapolis, spent about a year negotiating with a couple of companies I came close to buying. And after about a year, well, well, take a step back. Early on, Tracy Hutton, who now owns Century Twenty-One Sheets, she approached me to come to work as a realtor and do that in my spare time. And I said, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, Tracy, but I, you know, I'm used to managing companies and people and I'm not, I'm not really a realtor. You know? But she is tough to say no to, but I didn't say no. So she came back six months later then, and how you doing? And, and I was about a year into it. I said, well, you know, I've got, I'm close on a couple of deals. And she said, well, why don't you just do this in your spare time? Well, that was twenty-one years ago.
Quite a hobby, huh?
Yeah, so, so that's, so I, I found that I really enjoyed the, the business and it gave me an opportunity to do a lot of other things. So over the last twenty-one years, I've been a top two percent agent, residential salesperson in, in Hamilton County for nineteen of those twenty-one years.
Wow, that's impressive.
With, with the exception that one year I, I had cancer and I had to go through some cancer treatments. And then, of course, this year, I'm President of the City Council and, yep, that, that did affect my business.
Got you distracted, doesn't it?
A little distracted, so.
You welcome that probably though, don't you, a little bit?
I do, I love it.
Good timing for that.
Yeah.
So you're, okay, so you're a tough union guy.
I have been a union guy, yes.
Tough union guy, yeah, so that.
But it's, it's, I understand the unions anyway. That's, that's good. You need, you need to have that. I, I call it a well-rounded background. Yeah, that's, so.
What, uh, city did you grow up in?
I grew up in, in Deerfield, Illinois, which is northern suburb of Chicago.
All right, cool.
So, yeah.
Do you feel like, um, I don't know if it did help because in, in real estate, you're a nice problem solver and keeping people happy. Do you feel like your background, that was probably a tough business, the moving business? Did it help you in this?
The, yeah, yeah, it really, it's really helping me today a lot because in the moving and storage business, it was basically running a company. At the corporate level, I was working with agents all over the country. So I was looking at different, different scenarios. Every week, I'd see two or three different scenarios. And I'd, I'd go spend a couple of days with an agent and really kind of understand his business. And it was almost, almost like an auditor, if you will, trying to understand and make recommendations as to how he could grow the business or improve the business. So that was, that was kind of fun.
Yeah.
And, and then, of course, when I got into moving and storage, the first year that I got in, by the end of that first year, I, I, that the entrepreneurial spirit really got going. And, yeah, I was, I was a realtor, okay? But at the same time, I, I had this passion to become a developer too. So I actually was able to do what probably was the first infill subdivision in Westfield. Okay, so it's a little subdivision called Bainbridge and we're just north of a hundred and forty-sixth street, okay? And I bought eleven and a half acres with a house on it. It was a little horse farm.
Was it? Okay.
We, and so I did everything that any developer would do today. We had incorporated into the city. Because at that point, we were unincorporated and Westfield wasn't a city, it was a town, so. We incorporated that land into it.
You were almost Carmel.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we actually had a Carmel, we still have a Carmel mailing address all the way in Westfield. And, uh, so, yeah, so we did the development.
So you didn't catch the, did you catch the development bug? Did you do more of it or was that kind of in and out?
You know, I, I, I caught the bug. And we started, we started doing it and developed a vision. And, and my vision was to have larger lots, half acre to three-quarter acre lots and really to build some really nice quality homes. But we got hit in the, in the downturn.
Oh, okay.
So in, you know, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, it, it changed, the whole world changed. And of course, the bank came knocking on our door as it did other developers. And we were able, I had a partner, the two of us were able to scrape up enough money to, to keep, keep afloat.
To hang on to it, yeah.
Pay the banks when they, they caught. And, and we had, you know, we had several production builders coming to offering us money to buy the lots.
Sure.
We just turned them down, so that was not the vision. We were going to hold fire and make it through, which, which we did, so.
When did that finish up?
So we, we finished about, about four years ago, four or five years ago. We finished up probably around twenty fifteen. And so it's completely built out, fifteen houses. And it's a nice, quiet little neighborhood.
Yeah, it's nice. It's pretty, it's a good spot, too. The, um, just that same time is when I started, I started my real estate company in two thousand eight. So I can, that's my relation to that. I have bad timing, but.
No, I, you know, bad, it's, I think it's could be good timing too. I mean, when you, you start, when things are at their worst, it can only get better.
Isn't that right?
And in order to, it's, it's, it's a real test of your mettle, you know, really.
And I, that's one thing I, I took from that, I've taken from, from my business career is being at the bottom and going up is kind of fun. I mean, it's not fun being in it at the time, but looking back and knowing that experience is pretty cool, so.
Yeah, it is, it is for sure.
So, all right, so you got a family, married, kids? What's your?
Yeah, so I have two, two children, born a girl. They both live within a mile of Bainbridge, okay? So my son is actually an appraiser, okay, and has his own company. He's, he's been doing it for almost as long as you have. He's been doing it for twelve years now with his own firm and he lives in Village Farms.
All right.
And my daughter works at Roche, she's a finance person there and she lives in Viking Meadows. So, and I've got five grandkids.
Awesome.
And they range in from the eldest, who is a freshman at IU now, graduated from Westfield High School, right in this building last year. And, and I've got four additional that are, are in school from, from, well, one's two and a half.
So they all stay close by. That's pretty cool.
They're all close by.
Yeah.
And they were all there Thanksgiving for dinner, so that was great.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Enjoy that while we can, right?
Yeah.
All right, so you are the President of the City Council, Westfield City Council.
Yes.
And when did that, when was that election?
So that election was back in the fall of, of twenty nineteen. We took office in January of twenty twenty.
So twenty-four, is it, is it every four years?
It's every four years, yeah.
Um, when did you, I'm sure you've always paid attention to a degree. When did you decide that you were going to throw your hat into the fire and try to get involved that way?
Well, you, you know, it's, it's funny. I, I really never had a great desire to get into politics. And, and maybe that goes back to when I was a kid growing up, my family's, when a close friend of ours was basically the, the manager for one of the governors of Illinois, okay, is his top man. And, and I never paid much attention to that during high school, other than he was pretty candid when they'd be over for dinner with my folks, just saying, Michael, you never want to get into politics. And he would just look at my dad and says, it's a dirty business. I'll tell you about it after he's gone. And so I kind of, I, I never, never really thought about that. However, going back now, I guess it was around twenty eighteen, the beginning of twenty nineteen, probably twenty eighteen. My neighborhood Bainbridge, we had some issues and questions to the city with respect to the thoroughfare plan and the planned thoroughfare plan. So we did what, what any neighborhood would do is we got involved with the APC, with the council, and we had the council members come to visit us to talk to us about the plans of the city. And of course, we found out that only three, only two counselors were coming in at any given time, or three, because any more than that would be considered, you know, a full council meeting. So we basically had four meetings and all the city council members came at one time or another. And we had the same message. We had a nice portfolio that we gave to each of them. And we, we had the, the city engineer there and the public works was there, Jireh Jeremy Lawler was there, and they were all there. And we weren't getting any answers from any of them, basically that, that we wanted to hear anyway. And, and so finally, the, the last team that came through, Joe Edwards, Counselor Edwards, was, was there and he was one of the folks there. And we said, what, what can we do? How, how do we change some of the things we need to get changed? And he looked out at us and there was like twenty of us sitting in the room. He says, one of you needs to run for city council. And everybody looked around, they all looked at me because, yeah, I, I developed the community. I'm the President of the HOA and it says, why don't you get, and I said, no, 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 guys, no, thank you.
You really had no interest.
I had no interest, so that was, so that was not me, okay? So that must.
Were you busy? Your work's busy? You're developing this property?
Yeah, I'm developing, I'm looking, I'm, I've, in the meantime, I've built a couple of spec houses out of Chatham. So I'm working with a builder, I'm building spec houses. I'm really enjoying that part of my life, you know?
Yeah.
Now, things, things are pretty good and I, I really, and I'm not really paying a lot of thing, you know, a lot of attention to what's going on in the city. Really, other than we're growing and that's great. And, and as, you know, as a realtor, we're selling that to, to clients and customers. And, and it's a wonderful story and it's a great place, so, you know. Other than real, other than realizing what a wonderful place Westfield is to be, I really didn't have any interest in, in helping to manage it.
So by accident almost, not by accident, but you, uh, by default became the point person of this group?
Well, yeah, it was, and it really, it was more, by my, by somebody's default because basically my neighbors got together. We had a holiday party and during the holiday parties, one of them got up and announced that I was going to be running for office and that they were all going to support me. So that, that was in fact, yeah, it was, my neighbors voted to make me do this, so.
Was that your first fundraiser?
And it was. I didn't even know what a fundraiser was, so, but yeah, apparently it was, so.
I mean, did you know, like, I know you're, you've been around, but did you know what it meant, like, to run for office in Westfield? Did you know the process? Did you know any of that?
No, no, it's called learn what you earn. No, I had no idea. And what I did do was actually, because of some of the issues we had with the city, I started going to the city council meetings and the APC meetings. And in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, I went to virtually ninety percent of those meetings. So I was, I was doing, doing the work, going there and listening and learning. And, and, and I would say anybody who has any kind of intention or desire to get, get into politics and to participate, that's my first recommendation. Go and sit and observe, take notes. I've got, I've got just notebooks full of notes that I took from those meetings.
I remember seeing you, so, um, I've always made a habit of regularly going to the APC and the council meetings. And it was, um, you, you, there was a day suddenly you were at all the meetings. And I remember that. And you were taking notes and, yeah, it was, you can tell you were there to work. And I think a lot of times that gets skipped. When people decide to run or get involved, you know, that's a serious part of it, I think, learning.
It, it, yeah, I, I agree.
And the dialogue.
It's probably the most important part. I don't know where I would have been if I had not have done that. And then with respect to politics though, and, and actually getting elected, we didn't, I didn't recruit, I didn't go out and raise a lot of funds at all, pretty much self-funded.
Did you?
And really was just knocking on doors. And I pretty much knocked, I tried to knock on every door in, in my district.
Did you?
I did.
So what is, uh, can you kind of give me a boundary? I know they're kind of goofy in Westfield, but what are your boundaries for your district? Or is it a neighborhood kind of?
Yeah, well, so, so the current boundaries, my southern boundary of District Five is a hundred and forty-sixth Street. And east is far as if you went to, oh, just past, um, just past the movie theater on a hundred and forty-sixth Street.
Also does cross over.
Starting right around the water tower and then going up to Spring Mill Road. And then north, north as far as a hundred and sixty-first Street.
So it does cross thirty-one there?
It does.
I didn't realize that, okay.
It does.
So if you're listening and you live in that section, Mr. Johns is your counselor in your district.
Although, although I've got to point out that we are going to be, going through some type of a redistrict here. So I know the mayor just called me last week and said, he and I need to get together and kind of talk about how this redistrict's going to work.
Do you know, have you studied the, what it means to redistrict?
I have not. I have not.
It's got to be a huge process, doesn't it?
It, it there's.
A long process.
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be interesting to see how that works out as we've grown.
It will be, but it's all, it's all obviously based upon our population. Now, as long as we remain a, a, a third-class city, which we are, we will have seven districts because that's, because third-class cities have seven districts. If we opt to grow and become a second-class city as Carmel is, then we'll have nine districts.
That's right, so we have nine counselors.
And, and, and really, it's, it's currently, it's five districts and two overall at large counselors.
Do you prefer either way on the class city or do you?
And my, my, I, I guess my personal feelings is right now, as I've looked into this, I think I would recommend we stay a, a, a third-class city for the immediate future. Because as we're going to, as I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about, we're at a point where we're really, where we need to focus on getting the three, the three legs of government working together. The legislative, the administration, the, the, the financial aspects all together. And I don't think we're there yet.
Not quite ready yet for that.
So I don't think we're next. Once, once we're working in unison, the way we should be as a city, because we're still going through a growth, through the growth here from town to city. And I, once we get through that transition, then I think we, we can.
It's a different story though, yeah.
Exactly.
So when you, um, got, when someone raised your hand that you were going to run for council, was it counselor that interested you? Was it, were there other positions that interested you at the time? Or was it just you thought you could be effective as a counselor?
Uh, yeah, I, it was, it was always city council because I've, I, I felt that that's where I had to be to, to be able to make a change and have, have a voice. Uh, and then, of course, at the same time, I, I've got a, a real love for the APC, so. And I knew that a couple of city counselors sat in APC, so I saw a real opportunity to do a lot of the things that I like to do.
I think the APC work is the most interesting to me, obviously from my business. But just from a community growth and community development standpoint, listening and paying attention to that process is fascinating to me.
Yeah.
I mean, have you enjoyed that?
And, and, and to me too, to me too. So, and you know, we've got two counselors who are in the APC, Cindy Spojerke and myself. Well, Cindy's background is in urban planning, okay, so that's what she went to school with and studied. And of course, my background with the real estate and the development and the building, you know, I've kind of, that's kind of a love that I have too. So hopefully we complement each other.
Yeah, of course.
And I, I still default to her and her wisdom and, and she's been doing it for a while. So, I mean, she's, she's, she is my.
She deserves some credit for that, right?
She's my go-to person, absolutely, absolutely.
So you've been doing this a couple, or you've been a counselor for a couple of years now. What has been something in the role that surprised you or that you were, you had no idea even maybe existed or?
Well, I, I think the first, the biggest surprise to me, uh, oh, first of all, let's say, what does council, city council do? Okay, so the city council is, is responsible for approving the budget. We're responsible for enacting local ordinances. And we're responsible for appropriating funds to operate city government. So in the big picture, the city council is primarily more of a financial arm of the city, legislative and finance and financial. So my biggest surprise when, when I took office was really the lack of a formal structure for the city council. And, and, you know, again, I'm, my background, you know, whether in school or working with companies, I was always looking for a structure and a process.
Sure.
You kind, in an organization, you kind of could put your arms around and to understand how things work. We didn't really have one and, and, and I'm not, I'm not pointing any fingers at the old council at all.
Yeah.
Because the old council had been around for, for, oh, the eight years we were a city and a couple of years before that, for sure. Most of them had been there in office for at least ten years. They had come from a time when we were a town government to a, to a city government. They had a lot of relationships and friendships built up and they were used to working together. And there was a certain level of comfort that existed amongst them. But as we took office, you're looking at seven counselors, five of which are brand new.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're looking for, where's the structure? How do we work this? And, and there wasn't any, so.
That's an interesting perspective because that, when you explain it that way, um, yeah, it was like a, there was a lot of camaraderie there for, uh, history and trust and they knew maybe the other person's play and.
I think they did. I, I mean, there, there's some great guys, good friends of mine, you know, that were in the old council.
But it doesn't transfer well.
No.
To new people.
It, it doesn't. And, and you know what? There's, there's also, there's no manual.
Yeah.
There is no book that says this is what you do and when you do it. I mean, it's just.
That's interesting.
It's, so, so that's, so, so we, we set about early on, yeah, last year, trying to figure out and trying to create a structure. So we looked at the seven guys that we had, okay, and we've tried to play to our strengths. So the first thing we did was we established a finance committee and took three, put, put Joe Edwards on the finance committee. He's, yeah, a finance background, CPA. Uh, and he'd been an old council member, so he had a lot of, you know, understanding what had happened. Troy Patton, CPA, his own business, you know, very successful. And, and then Scott Fry, who's a finance, finance, business guy type guy. So that became our finance committee. Then we looked toward an oversight committee and the oversight committee, oversight's going to be looking at process and how do you work the process? And, and of running the city government. So we, we took him, put Joe Edwards again on that committee because of the longevity that he's had and, and really give, able to give a historical background to the committee. And then we took a couple of guys, uh, you know, Jake Gilbert, football coach, high school guy. And, and Scott Willis, you know, from, with a military background. Couple of guys that really should really understand processes, if you will, and we put them on the oversight committee. And then that left two of us out there, Cindy Spojerke and myself, both of who, as I said, we've got both, have got the, the background for the APC and a real, a real desire to be on the APC. So that, that's how we structured.
Broke you up well, yeah, that's a good way to divide it.
And then at the same time, we also looked over at the RDC. And the RDC is a five-member board, the Redevelopment Commission, five-member board. The council has two members on that, that sit on that board, two appointees. So we, we tried to select two appointees who were critical thinkers, who had good finance backgrounds and, and who weren't afraid to speak up. And so we, we've got Bob Bowdre and Linda Nass on there. And so we, we feel like we've got, we feel like we've got a good team of people and try to put them in, in the right place, right positions to, to make a difference.
Do you think, um, so this, the oversight and the finance committee, obviously you wanted it there because you liked some structure. Do you think it, um, a lot of it was run the way it was, just that, that's how it needed to be run as a city is young and early? Do you think that's just the format you have to take? And I compare it like starting a company to me. Sometimes you just got to go make sales, you know, but, but I can do that as a private individual. Do you think that's just how you get things going or do you think it's, or that's a bad way to do it in, in general? I know you're not critiquing, but.
Well, there were.
Hindsight is it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that it is, there's a continuum in development and, and, and growth. And as you're, as you're a town with five or six thousand people in, and you, over, over a, you know, over a twelve-year period, you become a city with forty-three thousand people, there's that growth. And as that growth comes through, you need to build, build an organization that, that is, is comfortable, can accommodate that growth. Okay, so, so the, the biggest surprise that, that we really found as, as a, as a council whose responsibility is, is finance, okay, is that we didn't have any financial information.
Yeah.
All right? So what, what, what we need to be able to function properly is we need to have quarterly financial statements so we can track the actual versus budget, okay? And, 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 and we didn't have those. And we, we passed, uh, passed a resolution and the, the administration agreed that they would provide us with that quarterly information. And, you know, it never came and it never came and we had our finance meetings. And, you know, the, the tensions rising between the administration and, and, and the council? And why, why, why don't we have this information? And finally, you know, the mayor and I had, I had a one-on-one conversation about sixty days ago now.
Yeah.
And the mayor and manager said, you know what? We, we can't provide it to you because we don't have it.
Don't have it, yeah.
Okay, because we're, we're running it, basically, we're running it with the general idea, we have some general information, but we don't really have that specific. And that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a common, so, so we, we can fix it. We can fix it, okay? We can take action to, between work with this administration, the clerk's office, to get that information. But, but in addition to that, but even the, the administration had promised the old city council back in twenty eighteen, they passed a resolution that the city council was supposed to have a quarterly report on debt, on liquidity, on investments. Those reports on a quarterly basis were never provided. So, you know, so I, I didn't stick my finger in the mayor's eye, but I did ask him point blank, well, help me. So what about these, these reports? So what about these, these reports? He says, well, be perfectly asked, we, we don't have access to those either.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, again, God bless the mayor.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna work together and we're gonna get it.
Yeah.
But he, as, as we're learning more about the city now, I mean, I have a better understanding that the administration doesn't have all the answers with respect to finance. They don't have a finance department as you or I would in our personal business and they rely upon the clerks.
Yeah.
Okay, which becomes one of the other issues because the clerk and the administration.
Yeah.
They've been butting heads.
Yeah, so when everybody's not getting along, it's hard to get information across the desk, isn't it?
It's very hard.
Well, I, a couple of weeks ago, and this is a different part of this, but a couple of weeks ago, you got, it, it's almost like I saw white flags go up between you and the mayor. You guys obviously met and, um, it seems like there's a little better temper towards sharing information and working towards a final, final goal of, of accountability, so. And, and even if he didn't have the information and you guys were asking for the wrong thing, whatever it is, it, I think everybody wants the same thing in the end.
I think, I think everybody does and, and, you know, that's what we need to get now.
So was, um, um, what's, is that fun, is it, is it fun being on the council? What's, what's your favorite part of being on the council? I, I can't imagine sitting up front arguing and, and being stonewalled or stonewalling or, you know, demanding is your favorite part of anything. But you're a union, old union guy, right?
Well.
I mean, what's been fun about it?
Yeah, I, I think the, the, the best part is, is the camaraderie on the council. I mean, we've got a council that's, I mean, it's, it is a battle. We're trying to, we're trying to make changes.
Yeah.
And, and we're trying to really turn things around and not even turn things around as opposed to, as opposed to create something from scratch. And so, um, that's, that's the fun part is, is being able to look down the road. We see the changes, the changes are coming. It, it's, it is somewhat, it's frustrating though, because it is kind of learn why, or you earn, if you will, type of a deal. Probably the most frustra- frustrating thing for me over the, over the last year was this litigation that went on between the clerk's office and the administration.
Yeah.
And, and, and I, I wish that the council, wish we, we, wish we had known six months ago what we know now.
Yeah.
We could have saved the city half a million dollars.
Couple of bucks.
But, 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 but it, it, it came down to at least we, we got ourselves in the right position. We, 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 we took charge and did what the council was supposed to do eventually. This, this needless, needless lawsuits back and forth between the, the two parties. It's cost the city, uh, one point seven, one point eight million dollars that we will never recover.
That's just the cost of fees.
Just the waste. That's just your attorney's fees and court fees. And those are, those are costs that never, ever should have been incurred. And, uh, and it wasn't until the, they blew through their budgets. And once they blew through their budgets, we, the city council then could say, we're not gonna give you any more money. And in fact, that's what we did three months ago. We, we, and, and that was a big city, city council meeting where we said. You can, you can, you can keep suing each other, but the residents of Westfield are not going to pay any more money for this.
It was far out of hand for that. It can't just be an open checkbook.
It was far out of hand and.
And you know, the other, the part of it I, I hated as a big Westfield fanboy, you know? It just, the emotional cost of, and the reputation cost that, you know, you'd read the IBJ and Fishers is talking about this great thing and I know it's cyclical, right? I mean, everybody has a bad day, but it just seemed over and over again, negative coming out of Westfield.
Yeah.
And I think that probably has a higher cost and hopefully.
It was, it was horrible. It was horrible. So now we've had, and now, and in conjunction with the lawsuits, we've got the audits.
Yeah.
So when the council came in, we knew that there was a question with respect to Grand Park. And, 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 and was it, we wanna know, are you making money? Are we making money in Grand Park? Because anytime a city, a city decides to get into, into the private sector, okay, city's not equipped to handle it, okay? A town isn't.
Never has been, really.
Never has been. Government shouldn't, government really shouldn't be in the private sector, okay? Now, 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 do, do we, do we like the idea of Grand Park? Is it, is it a dream that has helped to make this one of the best places to live? God, yes. Do we support Grand Park? Yeah, we do support Grand Park. All we wanted to know was, is Grand Park making money? Well, somehow this thing got a life of its own and it turned into, yeah, we're, the, the administration saying, we're not gonna just tell you how Grand Park is gonna do, we're gonna do a complete audit. And we're gonna spend a half million dollars to do this complete, and we're going, what, we're gonna, we're gonna do what, you know? But, yeah, so we've had that audit done, we've had.
Just so you know, when they did the audit and when he read the summary, when he, when they read the summary, I thought, man, I hope there's nothing too bad in there.
Of course, and, and, and there was nothing in there. And then, but in addition to that audit, we've had three state board of account audits. They audited twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and tw- we're just finishing twenty twenty and that, that report will be out by the end of the year, okay? So there's been basically four audits that have transpired. And, and, and I can tell you that it, the good news is, there is nothing there.
That's what you want, I guess, yeah.
There is nothing there, all right. There's, there's some, the, the issues, there are some process issues. Do we need to change this process? Should this, should this part of the government be doing this and that part of the government? Yeah, all of that, okay, but, but nobody's, nobody's stealing money, I mean, I mean.
And I don't think, I, I, I think you guys, I, I don't think most of you thought anybody was stealing money. I think it was, hey, let's just make sure we're doing it right the whole time, but, man, I was holding my breath, man, don't even.
Well, you, you and me both, you and me both.
That could have been an ugly night for everybody.
Oh, yeah, so, so that's good. So, so you look, then you look at the results of those audits and you say, okay, now that we spent all this money and we spent all this time, what can we do? What can we gain from our experience? What can we glean from this? And, 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 and I'm looking at it and I'm saying, and, and I, and I zeroed in on Baker Tilly's little audit, which was like an eighty-page audit, but, but there's maybe about ten pages in there that are, that are the heart of it. And it really basically came down to them telling us what, what you and I have been talking about since we started this a half hour ago, is that you got a government with, with three parts to it. The legislative, the administrative and the clerks. And these three pillars of government have been functioning as three silos, if you will.
Yeah.
And, and, and they need to reach their hands across.
It's dangerous, yeah.
And, and, and work together as a team and share information and put things behind them, all right?
Do you think we've turned, made that turn?
I, I think we are starting to make that turn. I think the, we've made the turn with the acknowledgement that we've decided that that's what we wanna do.
Yeah.
And that's good.
And it's gonna keep, it's gonna require lots of pushing still, there's a lot of.
Look, look, we still, we still, these lawsuits aren't officially dropped yet. They gotta be dropped here and I wanna see them dropped personally. Well, I would like to see them dropped, speaking, the council would too, but me personally.
Yeah.
I'd like to see them dropped by, by the end of this year so that we start next year fresh, you know, put all that behind us. You know, as I said, we're not paying for it anymore, so let's get, let's get all behind us.
Usually the attorneys disappear when they're not, they can't bill anymore, don't they?
It's funny how that works. Yeah, yeah.
What is, um, something, so after, going the last couple of years, there's been a lot of, uh, he said, she said, there's arguing, whatever, you know, all the drama involved. What does a place like Westfield need right now? What's a win? What is a, what do you feel like, sitting up in front and hearing a lot of noise? And back office talk, you know, you hear a lot.
Yeah.
What is something a place like Westfield needs right now?
What, what, what I think we need, I think we need to focus on our downtown development. I think we got a lot of stuff going for us. We got growth going, we don't have to worry about attracting business, it's coming. Uh, we don't have to worry about attracting corporations. They will come and they're coming. They're, they're, they're gonna come at their own speed. You can't, you can't force feed it. They're gonna be here. But, and we don't have to worry about Grand Park as, as a whole. We need to tweak it a little bit, okay, but it's there, okay? So where's the biggest impact? Where can we do the most? And that's in our downtown area, okay?
Yeah.
And, um, I'm so excited right now with what's happening downtown. We've got, basically, we've got like three major projects all going on at one time. They're just starting downtown. So, so the first one is, is, is the DWA, Downtown Westfield Association. So you know, the city council has helped to fund that association for, for the last ten years.
Yeah.
All right, and, and it's really, it's grown into something and it's, and, and it's started to, it's self-funding now.
Sure.
Self-funding and it's saved, it's got a pot of money and, and the neat thing is, um, the, several of the, the top members in the association, and I know you're involved.
Yeah, I'm on the board, yeah.
Is got together and you guys are bringing in MKSK, uh, consulting firm.
Yeah.
And, and the purpose of what MKSK is going to do and, and, and again, this is great because this isn't the city council bringing in or the administration. These are the businesses in Westfield in conjunction with the administration, the city council, bringing, bringing these folks in. And they're gonna be looking at, at how to really, where we should focus our development in downtown Westfield. Identifying the percentage of the property should be commercial business, retail business, residential, where that should be located. The massing of the size of the buildings down there and also looking at the thoroughfare plan, how should the streets be divided? So, so that's one key project that's going on. The same time that that was announced about a week, two weeks ago, uh, a street, the streetscape project was also kicked off. So the streetscape project is a project with a core group which includes the administration, the APC members, uh, council members, chamber members, some developers. And they're all coming together to look at, first of all, focusing on that area immediately surrounding Grand Junction. Okay, and looking at, uh, what are the streets supposed to look like? What's the lighting supposed to look like? How wide are the sidewalks supposed to be? You know, should we have park benches? And giving them all a uniform look.
Yeah.
And then at the same time, kind of expanding that out a little bit to say, this is the pattern and that we'd like to see around this area and perhaps some patterns for other areas of the city. So, so that's kind of the, the second project. And then the third piece of that, that three-legged stool, if you will, too, is that, uh, the, uh, historic preservation.
Sure.
Area. And the, uh, city engineer Jonathan Nail has come to, come before the council and always coming before the council, uh, with an idea and they put together a, a preservation, historic pre- preservation ordinance. And working with Indiana landmarks to do that. So we identify, we, you know, we don't have a lot of historic buildings in Westfield.
Got a couple there, yeah.
Okay, but we do have a few. And, and they're not just in the down, in the immediate center of downtown by Grand Junction, but they're, they're, they're spot, they're, they're around the area. So, um, so that's, you know, we need to be addressing those two.
I love the, we've got a little momentum going downtown.
Yeah, we do.
You know, with, um, I remember when, one of the reasons I'm pretty, uh, ex, I'm, I am excited about the, the plan that we're working on with the consultants is, um, you know, the conference of plan was wonderful from a ten years ago when they were, they were working on it. But now we've matured a little, things are changing, the world's changed and lifestyles have changed. And it's fun to be able to see the next, where it really can go, um, in detail. And when Astroch was going through with his townhome project, obviously I had an interest because I was selling the ground. But, um, there was a lot of gray area as what we saw. We, we saw stuff that you don't hear of happening right now. And so, um, it'll be interesting to see how, once they go through this process, what changes? And how it develops into a dip, maybe this, this section, what we thought was gonna be something ten years ago, is it gonna be something different next? You know, and what's their opinion? Because they're in, they're doing this all over the country.
Right.
And so that'll, to me, that'll be very interesting as a guide.
And I think we're doing it the right way because I don't think we, we need to develop a whole new comp plan right now. We've got a pretty good comp plan as, as, as a whole for the city. But we need to get in, into specific areas like the downtown area and tweak that to really understand. And I think by having a core group with folks like you involved and, and developers involved, we're gonna get a better understanding of what everybody needs and wants and, and, and we'll make it work.
Yeah, but it, I like that it, it definitely is getting the attention of people and that'll be good. It'll be fun to see how that develops over the next couple of years, so.
And, and the other thing is, I mean, the city council, we've got, we have a real, uh, desire to maintain the history of Westfield.
Yeah.
I mean, we funded the historic cabin, the Baker Cabin, which is gonna get built next or constructed, yeah, right next to the city hall now. So that's, that's kind of neat.
Yeah.
And, and we, and we need to look, we need to look out to see how we can retain some of the history of Westfield because this is a unique community.
It is.
I mean, it's a community with a Quaker heritage that you don't see very much, but a community with, with a history of the Underground Railroad. One, what a wonderful story of diversity that we have that most, that other, most, virtually no other community has within, you know, within the country. So it's, so as we build and grow, we need to keep that in mind and, and, and build with that.
Do you, uh, do you, um, wanna stay on the council for a while?
You know, I, I, I don't know. I don't know. My, my, my commitment to the residents when I, when I ran for office was I would give four years. Okay, and, and I, and, and there's, and there's kind of some logic behind it. And, and the logic was, uh, you know, I had never served my nation before, okay? I was in the military, so I kind of looked at this as, this is my way of giving back four years. I've had a good life and I wanna give it back to my community, okay? Now, I didn't really realize it was gonna be a war the first couple of years. That wasn't the intent. I figured it'd be a nice, quiet, yeah, local gig, but, but, uh, it's turned in a little bit more than I thought it was gonna be, but yeah.
I mean, and I know this is a random question, do you see like mayor or being more than councillor, does that, or going into uh, regional government or anything like that, uh?
I've, I've.
Governor?
I have, I've kind of, I've kind of decided to put any of those, any of those thoughts on hold until, for at least the next six months. I, I really think we're, we're, we're going into a pretty formative area, but time for Westfield. And I, yeah, those thoughts of what am I doing in the future, I'm not even gonna entertain those until mayor.
So we, um, I think our, our, our next, um, season of Westfield, whoever become, is the next mayor. If our current mayor steps aside and someone else becomes mayor, whatever. I think it's the, our most important, uh, four years. I see us as being at this tipping point right now where we can make some really good decisions or really bad decisions. And I think our, before was great developing, um, Grand Park was a big deal, obviously from the size of a city or town we were, city we were. How do you feel about that? You think the next five years are pretty important in Westfield?
Oh, God, yes, God, yes. Um, I think we, we're, probably the, the, the biggest question that we, we need to answer right now is how, how big do we wanna grow to be? And what do we want Westfield to look, look at? The next, over the next couple of years, we, we need to, uh, we need to really focus in on our growth. We need to focus in on a capital improvement plan. We need to have a one, three, five-year capital improvement plan. And we need to have everybody on board with that plan, including our residents, so they know what the expectations are. We're growing so fast, we've got some tremendous infrastructure needs. We're trying to address those needs. We just approved ten, eleven million dollars for a new fire station.
Yeah, it's a big deal.
That's going in, okay? We're looking at adding a twelve-million-dollar parking garage as part of the old town development downtown. That's, that's necessary.
It's already necessary, I think, maybe.
So, so this, this council is not an anti-spending council. We're not an anti-growth council. We're, we're just, we just are looking at this thing and we've gotten over feeling, feeling that we're just totally overwhelmed with it. Because we, to a great extent, we as a city are, we know we're overwhelmed every day because of the growth. And what, what do we do next and what do we have to do? But we've got some great infrastructure needs and we need to define this.
Do you feel like messaging gets lost because of the small little battles? Do you feel like, cause you just mentioned something, I, we're not anti-spend. Do you think it gets hung up because you question things or do you think people think of you as that because of those? Uh, where do you think that comes from?
I, I, I think, I think that's, that's probably the case. I mean, I mean, what we want to understand is what is the true cost of a project? Okay, we wanna understand it before we enter into it, okay? You know, it's, 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 it's disconcerting when, when, when everyone buys in on a project and then it doesn't get completed because it's, it, it's gonna need another twenty-five percent to get it going. I mean, that's, that's not right. So what this council wants to do, what, what I personally like to do is, I like to just understand what the cost is. Give me the fully loaded cost and, and I'm not, I'm not afraid of spending money. We'll spend money. I, I'll, I'll spend money.
Gotta have a reason.
Just want them, and the other thing is, when we build something, we want it to be the best it can be. This, we, we're not, we're not a second-class type city here. We, we're first class.
Yeah.
And we are the fastest-growing city in, in Indiana. There's a reason why we are. And we want, we wanna, we wanna keep that number one position, so we're gonna have to look good and act right and, you know, it's a big picture.
It's a lot of work, isn't it?
It is.
Well, I don't envy your position one bit. I don't envy any councillors or any, anybody in elected officials, because I think, uh, it's, it's hard work. And so, um, I appreciate you coming and, and talking with me. And so, um, I appreciate you coming and, and talking with me candidly and being open to some questions and, uh, hopefully, uh, the next few years are progressive and are pretty exciting, so.
Well, and I, and honestly, I, I really thank you for all of your efforts.
You're welcome.
You know, I mean, you're on the council and, you know, you, you buying this stuff and whether, I gotta show up every week. You don't have to show up every week, but you're there and you're probing, you're asking the questions and you're focusing your time and you're, and you're contributing to the growth of the city. And, and I think, and I, I'm, I'm glad to have you and what I see as, as our growth team and moving forward here.
I enjoyed it. I absolutely love it. I think, uh, I don't, I kind of, I was talking to a guy today. And I don't understand why someone doesn't wanna be involved in their local community like at any level. And, um, he said, I don't pay attention to that. And I thought, wow, it's actually fascinating, you know? You don't have to get involved in the drama, but.
Yeah, I know. I, you know, what's, what, I think what's the biggest challenge? And we talked about growth as being the biggest. I think the second biggest challenge is to bring qualified people into government here. To get them motivated, get them excited to be part of it. And if there's anything that we can do as a city council to leave behind, it would be to, to, to get some, some projects going, uh, some processes to help bring new people into government. Cause we, God, we need them. We need them.
You know, that was one of the, um, I think that there's a lot of discussion out there, is why are people getting involved? And not everybody's retired or semi-retired and, um, just getting people to engage a small amount makes a big difference, I think. So, some effort. Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And, uh, I hope you have a great Christmas season.
You too, you too. Thank you.